Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council meeting for Tuesday, June 6, 2023. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Grisgoviac.
Here.
Councilmember Rayrower.
Here.
Councilmember Novak.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Here.
Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here. I forgot that was coming. Sorry. Next is to adopt this evening's agenda.
Motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Carlson and a second by Grisgoviac. Is there any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and the agenda is adopted. Next we are up to the minutes of the May 16, 2023 meeting.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson.
Motion to accept the minutes of May 16, second.
Motion by Carlson and a second by Novak. Is there any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion carries two abstentions, Geisler and Armstrong. Item, next item is the approval of the minutes from the April 25, 2023 Local Board of Appeal and Equalization.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson.
Motion to approve the minutes from the April 25, 2023 Local Board of Appeal and Equalization.
Second.
Motion by Carlson and a second by Geisler. Is there any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion carries one abstention, Councilmember Novak. Next, we are up to bid openings and contract awards. We're going to consider Resolution 23-10/9 awarding a contract for Northdale Boulevard water main replacement and mill and overlay project 23-10. Mr. Hammer, you want to hit that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. This is to consider award of that contract for, for the city portion, it is the water main replacement. We're working in coordination with Anoka County, who is planning a mill and overlay on this roadway anyway. That was last year. They agreed to delay for us to get our plans in order. The idea is that we get rid of some old concrete water main and some old cast iron pipe on Northdale Boulevard itself, knowing that in the not-too-distant future, we've got some pretty significant roadway and infrastructure work to do on either side, north and south of that with some of those neighborhoods. So as opposed to waiting till that time and tearing up the road, we want to get ahead of it, put in new water main, put the stub out, so we have good points of connection for the future. There is a JPA also on tonight's agenda for this, so they kind of go together. One is to award the contract that the city will be administering, running, responsible for. The second is kind of the agreement with the county on how those costs and maintenance are to be separated. The city portion of this work is approximately 1.5 million. Anoka County's is roughly $500,000 of that. We did have 1.7 in the water fund for this project this year, so we're coming in a little under budget. We did have five bids, $60,000 separated all five bidders, very tight, very competitive. And we haven't worked with Meyer in the past, but we have heard good reference checks on them. So I would recommend award to Meyer Contracting in the amount of $2,023,347.08, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, anyone have any questions for Mr. Hammer? Somebody want to?
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Armstrong.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution 23-10/9, awarding the contract to Meyer Contracting Inc. for water main replacement and pavement mill and overlay on Northdale Boulevard from Quint Street to Ilex Street as described.
Second.
Motion by Armstrong and a second by Novak. Is there any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion carries. We're down to old business. Item four, to consider planning case 23-8, consider adoption of ordinance 2283 rezoning Cedarwood 9730 University Avenue, and I believe the first thing we'll have to do is remove that from the table.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Geisler and a second by Grisgoviac to remove that from the, from the table. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. All right, so now we will consider planning case 23-8. Mr. Crowell, you're already up there, all right.
Yeah, I figured on this one, I know we've talked about it a couple of times, so I'll just kind of hit some of the, the highlights here. So again, we're, we're talking about the parcel at 9730 University Ave. It's currently zoned low-density residential, too, and in here, the applicant is requesting approval to rezone that to high-density residential for kind of an eight-unit town home-like development there. And then, yeah, we kind of talked about the site plan already to know how it kind of lays out on the, on the site, and there's another item related kind of to building materials we can talk about later. So again, in the, the staff report, we kind of highlighted some different items in those kind of three criteria that you're looking at on a rezoning, and felt like there were kind of arguments there for each of those criteria. I'm so happy to answer any questions or any clarifications you might have, or if you want me to go any detail on any of those three. But the staff recommendation was to adopt that ordinance 2283 to approve the rezoning. And then we do have the applicant here as well, so.
Okay, very good. Yeah, I, I watched the whole, the whole planning commission on this one. It was over an hour of discussion, and they seemed like they hammered it out pretty well. My concern was, was going to be related to the density, because I would love to see more like six or seven units there, but then I went over and looked at their other project, where they have 12 units on just a slightly larger lot, and it's actually a higher density than this is. You know, this ends up to be, yeah, anyway. So I guess I'm, I'm supportive of this, and I thought the planning commission did a very good job going through it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Kind of echoing what you said, I went over and looked at that area a few different times, and I didn't, I didn't make it all the way through the planning meeting, but from my...
It was long.
Yes, yes it was. Yes, it was. But from looking at the site and looking what's around it, I know we've talked a lot about high-density housing, et cetera, et cetera. I, I think it's a good use of the, of the piece of property there, and I really don't see where it wouldn't work, so I'm for it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
Yeah, and I apologize that I missed our last meeting, but for me, when I look at the site, it is just shy of an acre. And because of the size of the site, of the, of the property, that's where the high-density residential zoning comes into play, just because of the size. You need, because we have a cutoff of seven on moderate, and even though when anybody else would look at this site, you're going to look at it as moderate density, just from, you know, really the look and feel of how this is going to be. It's more of an administrative designation to get us into that legal space. I mean, if it was a 40-acre site, we would have, be having a much different conversation about changing something to high-density residential. When it's less than an acre, it's really, it's a good development, it's how it fits on the lot, and it's to make sure that we follow our zoning code, so I'm supportive.
Yeah, the other thing was, if, if this was medium density, then they could put like vinyl siding on or something like that, if I understood this right. But because it's high-density, we've got some say in how that is, and they're proposing to do the, you know, a better grade of siding anyway, so.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Novak.
Yeah, I did this as well, and the plan really impressed me. Also, the reputation of the builders is excellent. I, I can't say that enough. So, yeah, I'm all in favor of this one, and I'm not a big fan of high-density, so if it pulled me in, then it's got to be a pretty good plan.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Rayrower.
I agree with all of what my fellow council members have said, so with that, I will say for planning case 23-8, I make a motion to adopt ordinance 2283 for the proposed rezoning based on the following findings. The proposed rezoning does not have adverse impact on the surrounding area. The proposed rezoning is compatible with adjacent land uses and zoning, and the proposed rezoning is consistent with future land use guidance and policies of the 24 Comprehensive Plan.
Second.
Motion by Rayrower and a second by Geisler. Is there further discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grisgoviac.
So, as a matter of constituency, I mean, my constituents are not in favor of changing zoning to more high-density. I'm not opposed to high-density, we have it in town, we've got good spots for it, but my constituents told, told me, they, you know, do not support changing what we have now to high-density. So therefore, I mean, I campaigned on that, and I've talked to my neighbors about that, so therefore I can't support this. But I will say this, the, the housing development that is proposed here, I think it's smart. It looks nice, looks like high-quality buildings, but I've got a couple of main concerns. The first concern, and I'd like to have some discussion on this, is why are we going from low-density all the way to high-density when we have moderate density in the middle that would allow up to seven units without any further variances? I, I think that would be an acceptable plan for this space. It would just, a little bit less dense, a little bit more open space on, on the property. The second part of that is that if we make this change to high-density, the next thing coming up on our agenda is to grant a variance for the builder to put on siding that isn't compatible with the high-density rules that we have in place. So why aren't we maybe either making a, an exception or changing to moderate density, and then we wouldn't have the second issue that's going to face us here in a little minute? And so those are some concerns I have. I don't know if anyone wants to address that or have a discussion on it.
Mr. Crowell, can you, can you enlighten us a little bit more on the siding conversation? If, if this, if this was zoned medium-density or because we have to do the, the variance on the next one, can you help us, help us out with that?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So we did, I think as staff, when we got this initial proposal, we're looking at moderate-density residential and kind of shared that with the applicant, and I think through what we were kind of finding, if this had gone moderate-density residential, I think there would have still been a variance, if not two variances, just because we actually have in the moderate-density residential, a larger setback from adjacent commercial and office uses. So currently with the HDR, it has to be 50 feet from adjacent commercial and office, and actually in the MDR, it's 55 feet from office and general commercial. And so there probably, instead of the variance from University Ave that was granted on this project, there would have been some kind of variance from that general commercial or office district, because it's already kind of at the 50 feet in the current proposal there. So it just, it seemed like there was going to kind of be a variance either way, and kind of what was presented to us by the applicant, it just felt like it kind of made, made sense or was in alignment with, with the HDR designation there. And then, yeah, for the materials, yeah, again, this is kind of a, more of a development that you would see in our moderate-density residential or what it kind of describes, and some of the materials listed in our HDR kind of geared towards more apartments or larger developments, and so they just don't list this LP siding there. And so that's where, but there is language in the code to say that the council can approve an alternative mix of materials on, on those developments, so, yeah, it's...
So, so what would be an approved high-density siding? What, what kind of siding could he put on this if we changed the zoning to high-density that we wouldn't have to approve?
Yeah, so it'd be, let's see, so brick or CMU units, kind of stone, masonry stucco or ephesus, so it's kind of more what you see in our commercial districts and often those larger apartment buildings, more often than not, kind of have materials that are similar, more on the kind of commercial side, where this kind of side-by-side unit, kind of townhome, so it's like kind of a townhome, but again, by our code definition, it's not considered a townhome, it's more just a multifamily kind of dwelling, but they're side-by-side versus in an apartment kind of style off of a hallway. But in those kinds of townhome-style developments, that's where it lists more of that like vinyl siding or LP siding like they're proposing there.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so for me, you know, looking forward to the, the next case, it kind of bolsters the, the reason why it's okay to go to high-density here, is because we need to make that other change, so we're not making it look like high-density. We're not using those more commercial construction exterior materials. We're making it look more moderate-density, we're making it look more at that lower density, which is going to make it look and feel moderate-density. So, you know, and when we look at the whole package, you know, it, all but for, you know, a calculation of density, it really is a moderate-density project. And it's that but-for test of where's that line of what is moderate versus what is high? It, just where that line is drawn and the small size of that lot, we're stuck over the line into high-density. And, and nobody should be confused, there's no way a large apartment complex is ever going on this site, or there's anything bigger than what, that could go there. So it's just the nature of how big that piece of land is. Your Honor.
Councilmember Rayrower.
Yeah, I, I agree with Councilmember Geisler, and I would just like to add, you know, our zoning makes sense in that it's the guidelines, and it's going to work for the majority of projects to fit within those guidelines. But because Coon Rapids is considered a fully-developed city, we sometimes have these small parcels that pop up that now are developed, are able to be developed for whatever reason. And I think it does make sense that we're able to be a little more creative and, and make changes to the zoning as needed, so that if it is a good project, we've got a good builder, it works on the site, which I think all of those things are a yes on this, is why I think it makes sense to be flexible and allow the change.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson and then Councilmember Grisgoviac.
Yeah, I, my constituency also had concerns about high-density, but more so the large apartment buildings, and, and this particular complex is just what, one into high-density. It's, it's so close, and I...
Yeah, it's kind of, I think this one is, what did I say, like nine, nine units an acre, or like eight-point-something units an acre, where, yeah, moderate-density is kind of at that...
Real close. I, I also checked out the, the, you know, other complexes, it's close, and I, I like the way that fit on the land, and I like the fact these are, you know, larger units, and I know there is maybe some talk about trying to move to owner-owned, and I think that'd be great, but, you know, where, where they're owned rather than rented.
Oh, no, that's not the case.
Okay, I know, I know that's not the case. I know, but that was like a goal, I know, so I at least appreciate, I know that's not the case, but I know that was a goal. So, yeah, I, I, I support this, just because it's, it's so darn close, and it, there's no reason to believe that there wasn't, this isn't going to be a high-quality project.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Grisgoviac, yeah.
So I like the discussion, I appreciate the discussion, everyone. You know, to the fact that it's going to look like moderate-density, and we're going to change, make a variance so you can put moderate-density siding on it, why aren't we changing it to moderate-density? What is the main factor? Why aren't we just moving this to moderate-density? I like the fact that a moderate-density has a 55-foot setback against the commercial. I think it makes for a better home, you know, value for families in that area, and it also mixes well with the adjacent residential area to the, to the, to the, would be to the north. You know, you just, you can't go back, you know, we're getting denser and denser all the time, and Coon Rapids typically isn't a real high-density community, people didn't move here for high-density. So, again, concerns.
Thank you. All right. Let's see, we have a motion and a second on this. Do we have further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed.
Aye.
And that motion carries with one opposed, Councilmember Grisgoviac. And item five is to consider planning case 23-9, and again, we'll have to remove that from the table first.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Geisler and a second by Novak to remove item five, consider planning case 23-9, from the table. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion is off the table. Mr. Crowell.
Yeah, so this one, I'll, I know we kind of just started the discussion a little bit here, but we haven't really had a chance to kind of talk to this, so I'll just provide a little bit of detail. So again, here, we're, we're talking about the, the project at 9730 University Ave. So the, the applicant's proposing a mix of vertical cedarwood-colored engineered wood panels and then a horizontal black-colored engineered wood panel, and he does have a material boards here that we can kind of use to, to see that as well. So as we kind of just discussed, the, the list of exterior materials currently in our high-density residential district mirror those in several of our commercial zoning districts, and are geared towards maybe larger residential apartment buildings rather than the kind of townhouse-style building that they're proposing here. And so the, the LP smart siding that the applicant is wanting to use is just currently not allowed by code in our high-density residential district. But again, there's language in the code to say that the council can approve an alternative mix of materials, as long as it results in kind of a better integration of the, of the site and meets the intent of the code. And so our low-density residential and moderate-density residential currently allow LP smart siding. They also allow vinyl siding, which is often more a lower-quality type siding, so here it's kind of a nicer, higher-quality product that they would be providing. As the, the mayor kind of talked about, the, the planning commission had a pretty lengthy discussion on the project, particularly related to the materials. A lot of that was kind of, on this image here, the original proposal was a little bit more monochromatic, had kind of black doors, black posts on the porches and things, and I think a lot of that discussion was maybe some caution on, on so much black on that facade, and how could you break it up a little bit? So the applicant since then has shown that they would be providing more cedar doors and kind of cedar posts to kind of help break up the facade a little bit, and then the same here where they'd be proposing cedar garage doors, there where they originally kind of proposed black, again, having more of a modern kind of monochromatic style. So the applicant has been willing to kind of work with the planning commission since their approval on that, and then again, one of the conditions as part of that site plan approval was just to allow for the use of the LP smart siding here from the council. And I think those were the major highlights. Oh, one other thing I noted in the staff report at the public hearing, there was the neighbor to the north at the church there had, had shared some interest in having the applicant provide a fence on the property to help kind of prevent some kind of walk-through traffic that kind of exists right now across some of those properties. And then we did receive written testimony from one of the apartment buildings to the, the south, kind of requesting the same thing, to provide a fence there. And so in my kind of original staff recommendation here, it was just for that LP smart siding, but I think talking with, with staff and because of those comments that were brought up in the public hearing, another alternative recommendation, if the council is interested, is just to include providing a privacy fence on the property as part of this approval. It wasn't formally adopted as a condition of approval from the planning commission, but it was something the applicant had shared that they were looking to provide kind of through that public hearing discussion, so.
It seemed like there were some assurances given that there would be a fence, and I think planning commission kind of took that in, but they didn't...
Yeah, yeah, was it just like formally recorded in the staff report there? So that's where, if, if they're interested here tonight, there's kind of an alternative language we can do for a recommendation there. So happy to answer any other questions you might have. The applicant's here, again, he has the material samples to kind of give you an idea of what you'd be approving. Yeah, kind of can go from there.
It's, it seems like with all of the overstory trees that are already there, you're not going to see that much of this building driving up University anyway. I mean, you're going to kind of see the end, so I, I kind of thought, I'm going to kind of trust that he's going to build a building this nice-looking and...
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
And then this is the...
Could you please go to the mic?
Oh, yeah.
Eric Oldested, Value Homes, just wanted to let you know, the, on the left, the very little thing on the bottom left is the garage doors, and we would use like an industrial, commercial, insulated, nice-quality garage door, and then that's the LP siding, the black and the brown tones. The one that you have in your hand is the actual final selection, which we thought was just a little bit better, and it's more readily, we can get it in higher quantities a little easier than, this is a little harder to get, but we just like that one better for the look. And then next is the cedar, that's just cedar that would get, the post would get wrapped in cedar, and it would have more clear coats, so it'd be a little bit nicer looking than what that is. And then the final on the right is just what the decks would have, that similar color to that or that. So that is the look of it. And then what you have there is the fence, it's a Trex six-foot privacy fence, maintenance-free, there's very easy to deal with. It's a lot more expensive than like a normal wood one, because you don't have to touch it for years and years and years, but definitely want to do the fence and think that, that just kind of gives it that nice private feel when you're in there for the residents, and it just, all around, kind of gives it almost like a, I don't know, just a higher-quality community.
Yep, yep. Well, and it feels bigger inside when it's, when you, when it's defined, it just feels bigger.
Yeah, and we've done that exact, it's the wood-toned brown, I believe, the name of, and, you know, there's a few different colors, but we've done that exact one on different properties, and it's just like, whoa, once you do it and you're there, it's just like, yep, this is definitely worth it, you know?
And I, and I heard on the planning commission that you, you took our multi-housing, multi-housing crime, what is, what is that, that plan, you, you took the one for the rental licensing?
Yeah, it was great.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, it was, because I've done a lot of stuff in Minneapolis, and then when I did that day in Coon Rapids and met some of the people in the police department and the other people that were speakers, and it was just like, felt, just like, wow, this is, seems like a great place to develop for rent, you know?
We take, we take rentals very seriously, and you can have a great partner with our police department and with our, with, with our staffs.
Yeah, it was great.
Excellent.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we kind of talked about this with, with the previous, so I would make a motion to approve the use of durable engineered wood product, the LP smart side for the proposed cedarwood development at 9730 University Avenue Northwest, and add the condition that of privacy fence added, be added to the site plan.
Second.
Okay, so a motion by Geisler and a second by Novak, and you've got the language for the fence, do you need that written in or read in or?
Were they close enough by, okay, I just...
The motion covered it.
Okay, all right, good. We have a motion and a second, no further discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grisgoviac.
I'll just restate what I started with, it's a high-quality building, these are really high-quality components that are going into this, just excellent, you know, and it, and it makes sense to have it less commercial-looking, right, because it's not quite, you know, high-density apartment building, and it'll look less high-density. But again, that would all be allowed in moderate-density. So, you know where I'm going.
You could have just gotten by with seven units.
Yes, indeed, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further discussion? We have a motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. And that motion carries. Nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item six. Item six is to consider solicitor license denial appeals Everlite Solar. Thank you.
You have the last, we'll check all of the stuff.
All right, sounds good.
Mr. Mayor.
Thanks for making the extra trip back, sorry about that. Ms. Lenzweier.
Mr. Mayor and Council, before you tonight is an appeal of a solicitor license denial. There are two of them, for Everlite Solar, Kevin, and Brittany. There are two of them, for Everlite Solar, Kevin, and Brittany. Both failed to disclose that they had misdemeanor convictions for fairly minor in nature. And so that necessitated the denial out of the clerk's office. They are notified of the denial and then have the opportunity to follow the appeals process. And that is what is before you. So we'll ask that you hear from them if they're here. All right, and then I'll answer any questions. The applicant, the appellant can state her case. And then we will ask you to either uphold the denial or approve and direct the clerk's office to approve the license.
Okay, very good. Thank you. If you would just state your name then?
Hello, thank you for having me. Brittany Hagberg with Everlite Solar. And then also with Kevin, I believe it was Kevin Gronjes, correct? So he's no longer with the company, so it's just myself.
Did you want to, so we have your written appeal, but if you'd like to just kind of explain it again?
Yes, so it was just a misinterpretation on my part for disclosing that information on my application. And then it was, I think it was, I believe it was in 2007 years ago, so 2014, I believe. But it was just a misinterpretation on my part on disclosing that information. And moving forward, I will disclose that on my applications. We do a very good job of trying to follow the guidelines of every city that we go into in upholding a good reputation with the cities that we knock in.
Yeah, so, and the questions are, have you ever been convicted of any misdemeanor, gross misdemeanor, or felony? And then, and then in bold letters, failure to document all crime history completely inaccurately will be grounds for disqualification of license. And then the other one was, if applicant has been convicted, oh, that was, there's another one out here for traffic, isn't there?
Mr. Mayor, that's correct. We ask the traffic offense because they're driving out in the community. So that is similarly worded, only we use the word "traffic" in there.
Okay. Okay, does anybody have any questions of the appellant or the Ms. Lenzmeyer?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson?
Ms. Hagberg, is this the first application that you've filled out?
No, so I have permits in multiple cities. So I apologize for not disclosing that information on this application. Haven't had any issues with it in the past, so that's why I guess I misread it. But I have permits. I am wearing them currently. I have permits with multiple cities within Minnesota.
Ms. Hagberg, so did you disclose the, was it careless driving?
It was a careless driving.
Did you disclose that to the other cities that you applied to?
I don't believe I did. I can't exactly recall, but I don't believe so based on how I interpreted it on the applications. I just believe I misinterpreted the information as it was a long time ago and I didn't know if that qualified.
Ms. Hagberg, did those other applications, did they read about the same way? Because it's very clear in our form, on Form 1 and 4, 5, it's very clear what you're supposed to do.
I guess I just didn't understand that it was classified as a misdemeanor at the time. And so I didn't think that it was actually a misdemeanor. So it was just my misinterpretation of the terms that were in the applications.
And Ms. Hagberg, of course, if we just put the whole misdemeanor part aside, it's surely a traffic offense and very clearly a traffic offense because it is a misdemeanor and one of higher consequence, you know, possible loss of license, that type of thing. So it's certainly one of higher consequence than a speeding ticket that might be easy to forget about from 10 years ago. So I just, I don't understand the misinterpretation, Ms. Hagberg.
I guess just for me, it was a long time ago. I haven't had any issues with it in the past. I just didn't think that it qualified as misdemeanor. It was simply just a mistake on my part for not understanding the consequences of those actions during that time period. So my apologies, I apologize.
Councilmember Rayrower?
Could you share with me your, where else you've been licensed? And then also, how long you've been in business?
So how long I've, the company has been in business? So the company's been in business for about five years now. Myself, I've been working with the company for almost a year.
Okay.
I have permits in, geez, would you like me to list off all the cities I have permits in?
Give me like a round number-ish.
For the number of cities?
Yes.
I would probably say 30 cities.
Okay. Just for myself and reviewing the offense and then reviewing the information provided, I am willing to consider the request. And I think it's important to have another chance, so.
Thank you.
That's where I would stand. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
Yeah, so this question maybe goes to Ms. Lenzmeyer and our acting chief. If this had been on the application, would we have moved to deny for having that careless driving on the application or is it, because I know the denial is because it was missing. But if it was there, would we have generally processed that? Or is that something that would have normally stopped that application from being approved?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Geisler, I would have discussed it with the city attorney and likely, due to the fact that it's the number of years ago that it is and there's been no recurrence, we would have granted it.
Okay. And for me, that is typically where I would go. And it's really, again, it's a second chance. It's making sure that you know that as, you know, you're filling out that application, here's the consequences. It goes for the appeal. We get to go through this. But knowing that if that was on there, that it would have been reviewed and likely approved, would mean that I would be fine approving the license.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson?
No, the purpose for this is so we can properly vet people who go door-to-door.
Correct.
And so we're giving someone a permit to allow them to, again, strangers come in our community to go door-to-door in our community and walk up to people's homes. And your offense, Ms. Hagberg, don't get me wrong, isn't like a real serious offense compared to many others. But it's very important that we abide by our rules. And it was very clear to me that it was supposed to be disclosed, and it wasn't. And I have a lot of concerns. If we have these rules where we're supposed to disclose convictions, criminal convictions and traffic offenses, I have a real concern when we have that requirement that people are not disclosing that information. And I'm glad that our city does vet properly solicitors before they're sent into our community to people's homes.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Novak?
I have to agree with Councilmember Carlson to a point, but the reason why we have this process is to find these mistakes. However, we also have an appeals process, and that's what we're doing right now. If the original offense would not have been an automatic dismissal, then it's up to the council at this point then to decide, is that omission in of itself a reason for denial? Or is this appeal process enough to actually gloss over that and have to go through this? I have to say at this point, given what I've seen and some of the mistakes that I've made filling out paperwork, I'm willing to go forward on this one.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Armstrong?
This is probably a question for Ms. Lenzmeyer. But if, for whatever reason, this didn't pass here tonight, what options does she have available to her?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Armstrong, should you uphold the denial, the applicant is welcome to apply again and go through the process and make sure that all of the information is correctly submitted to us. So there is no waiting. She could go right away and apply if that's what she would like to do.
And she could do that when? Tomorrow?
I'll be here at 8:00.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson?
I just want to make clear that omission is grounds for denial.
Right.
Right.
And that's where I'm sitting. I mean, I think that we had every right to deny it because there was omissions. And you're appealing the denial, but we were, in fact, correct in denying it because there were omissions. And so I would, I personally would like to uphold the denial, but that then, that you know that you can start over and actually do it right the next time.
Yes, so it was just an honest mistake on my part. And because I haven't had any issues with it, I thought I was filling out the forms correctly. So it was just naive on my part to misinterpret what a misdemeanor actually is. And because it was so many years ago, I haven't had any issues with it in the past. Thought I was filling out the forms correctly. So again, I apologize. And yes, I'm here in front of you to show that I am apologetic and that it was simply just a mistake on my part.
And you do understand now that, depending on how this goes, if we uphold the denial, you can go right back and do the application again. And it's probably going to be fine as long as, you know, disclose everything.
And then would that be, would I be able to be approved for a permit then soon? Or how long would that take for me to be approved for a permit?
Mr. Mayor and Council, not very long because we've gone through the process. We've got, it wouldn't take the 14 days again. We don't need that. We would just get the paperwork done, verify everything with PD, and then we would contact you.
Okay, so say if I applied again tomorrow, I would be able to get a permit within three days?
I think you're trying to nail it down.
Right. Assuming everything goes correctly.
I've never been to a council meeting before, so.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I'm going to start with the easy one. I will make a motion to deny the clerk's, deny the appeal of Kevin Gronjes for the solicitor license.
Okay.
All right, so let me get my, this turned on again here.
And want to take them separately.
Yeah, okay, so we have a motion by Geisler, and that was a second by Rayrower, I think, to deny the appeal by Kevin Gronjes, correct?
Correct.
Is there discussion on that? Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. We are upholding the denial.
So then, Mr. Mayor and Ms. Hagberg, Hagberg, if I said that right? In this case, I would like to make move to approve, approve the appeal and direct the city clerk's office to issue the solicitor license to Brittany Hagberg.
Second.
It's a motion by Geisler and a second by Rayrower. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Griscoviac?
Is it too late to ask Ms. Hagberg a question?
No.
Okay. First of all, thanks for coming tonight. I appreciate that. I think, you know, you've made the right call here coming. And I think that our staff was correct in denying. And I think you had every right to reapply and get your permit, so I'll just say that. Just one question I have for you. Have any of your permits for other cities ever been withdrawn?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
Yeah, so just as a side thing for me, you know, it makes sense to, you know, make the motion to approve the license here tonight, knowing that all we're going to do is add more work to our city staff, that is, to process paperwork that pretty much has already been processed and getting to an outcome that we already know is going to likely lead to that approval. So for me, what I would almost like to do is to add a second thing that's just a side comment for staff, that maybe we want to be looking at this process in the future to say if there is a clerical error, if there is a miss, that before we do an automatic denial, we give that applicant a chance to make a correction and submit it and then make our decision. And just throw that out for food for thought of something that we could consider so we don't run through these. But I think we kind of know what that outcome is, and so that's my motion tonight.
Mr. Mayor?
We don't, Councilmember Carlson?
I think the paperwork is very form, is very clear. I have all eight pages here. And I'm proud of our city and their vetting process. I'm proud that we're vetting people who are, again, going to be walking around our community, you know, soliciting. And I don't think we need to change a thing. I think this process is proper. And I think upholding this denial is the proper thing to do because this was an omission in a couple of different spots. And, you know, I mean, careless driving is clearly a misdemeanor. And I'm sure there's some steps that you had to go through with that. Other, this is different than a speeding ticket. And so, no, I think our process is fine, and I think our paperwork is very clear.
Yeah, and I agree, Councilmember Carlson. And I don't think I would like to see people going, well, let's see, I wonder if maybe they won't find this. I'm going to omit this, knowing that if they do find it, they're just going to let me do it again. I think it needs to be a process. It needs to be, I think this process works well. And I like the fact that if we uphold the denial tonight, that she can do the process again. And maybe it'll be shortcutted a little bit because some of the work's already been done, but.
Your Honor?
Councilmember Novak?
Again, kudos to the staff. I agree completely that this kind of thing does have to be caught for just that reason. But again, I'm going to reiterate that part of the process that we have in place already is an appeals process. And with that appeals process, we are allowed then to short-circuit the reapply process if we want to. I mean, it says nothing whatsoever to disparage the work that they've done if we go by our own process at this stage and grant an appeal. Granted, it wouldn't be for the original offense of not doing it properly. It would be for, oh, okay, well, yes, this was not disclosed. However, even if it had been disclosed, the application would have been approved anyway. It was right to deny, and now during the appeal process, we can take a look at it on this case-by-case basis and say, okay, in this particular case, even though it was right to deny because of the non-disclosure, we can put it forward now. So that's where I stand.
Okay. Councilmember Rayrower?
I just want to clarify really quick. We're not debating on changing the process tonight. We're just determining a vote on whether we're upholding or approving the appeal or not. So that's all. Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second on the Brittany Hagberg one. And the motion and the second are to approve the appeal, correct?
Correct, and issue the solicitor license.
Okay, so is there further discussion on that? All in favor of that signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay. That, so the motion fails on a vote of four to three. So, so we've now, do we have to now take a vote to uphold the denial then? Okay, so I need that in a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson?
Make a motion to uphold the denial?
Second.
Motion by Carlson and a second by Armstrong. Mr. Brody, where are we at?
I think we're good.
Okay.
I think it's fine. I'm not sure the necessity of the second motion, but I think it does make a cleaner record.
Okay, all right. So we have a motion and a second to deny the appeal. Is there a discussion on that?
Your Honor?
Councilmember Novak?
Okay, given the outcome of the last vote, I do want to now state that because we're now voting strictly procedurally, I will support this.
Okay, all right. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries to opposed Councilmembers Geisler and Rayrower. Okay, you got your, you got your direction now, right?
Yes, I'll see you at 8:00 AM tomorrow.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Item seven is to consider joint powers agreement with Anoka County for Northdale Boulevard water main replacement and mill and overlay project 23-10. Mr. Hammer?
Mr. Mayor, Council, this is again in coordination with the previous for the aw-
Mr. Mayor, Council, this is, again, in coordination with the previous for the award of project. This is a joint powers agreement between the city and Anoka County dictating the cost distribution, ongoing maintenance of the overlay and water main replacement project on Northdale between approximately Quince and Ilex. Again, pretty straightforward, JPA. The city will be the lead agency, will be seeking reimbursement from the county. City costs are approximately 1.5 million. Anoka counties are about 500,000. I think one thing maybe I failed to mention that's in the memo here is there's a traffic signal at Soderbergh location. The need for that signal is minimal at best. It probably doesn't meet warrants today. Anoka County is continuing to work with the school district on timing, ways to remove that, how do we change traffic, you know, turn lanes potentially, pork chop, limiting access. So Anoka County will continue to do that. It's outside of the scope of this, and we will update council if anything more comes of that. But for now, it's just removing or approving the joint powers agreement, and if there are any particular questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Yeah, I imagine the neighbors out there probably like that because I would imagine that's their sliding hill on the other side of Northdale. They probably, you know, that's their way over there. But, okay. So no update on the signals anyway.
As of today, no update.
Okay, thank you. All right, council, what's your wishes on this?
Mayor?
Go ahead. I make a motion to approve the execution of the GPA with Anoka County for the water main replacement and pavement mill and overlay on Northdale Boulevard from Quince Street to Ilex Street.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Armstrong and a second by Novak. Is there further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. All right, item eight is to consider a construction contract for 97th Lane Water Main Replacement Project 23-15. Mr. Hammer?
Mr. Mayor, Council, this is to consider the water main replacement on a very small section of 97th Lane near the intersection of Yellow Pine. We've had four breaks in this segment in the past year. It appears as if we do have some corrosive soils, and we are proposing to, there's currently a leak happening right now, just a very small leak, and prior to trying to fix that, we wanted to get this to the finish line to see if we would do a bigger project to try to resolve all of the patches that have been placed in there. So we will be removing the duct to line pipe and replacing it with a PVC. Did not exceed the requirements for competitive bidding, so we did solicit three quotes. We received two back. Dave Perkins Contracting has done a lot of work for us on similar projects, and so I would recommend an award for $139,790.
All right, anybody have any questions of Mr. Hammer?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Guskoviac?
And that includes putting the street back together, right?
That's entire project cost, patching, restoration, curb, everything.
Yep, got it. Thank you.
Your Honor?
Councilmember Ray Rower?
I make a motion to approve the attached construction contract with Dave Perkins Contracting Incorporated for the 97th Lane Water Main Replacement Project and authorize staff to execute the agreement.
Second.
Motion by Ray Rower and a second by Novak. Is there further discussion on this? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Item nine is to consider resolution 23-70, appointing Lisa Jones to the Board of Adjustment and Appeals. Ms. Lenzmeyer, you want to? Oh, you're all queued up and ready to go, leaning right into the mic.
I want everybody to hear what I have to say. Mr. Mayor and Council, before you is a request to appoint Lisa Jones to the Board of Adjustment and Appeals. She has applied, and she has been to a meeting and is interested in serving, and we would love to have her.
Very good.
Your Honor?
Councilmember Ray Rower?
Be happy to make a motion to adopt resolution 23-70, a resolution appointing Lisa Jones to the Board of Adjustment and Appeals with the term ending December 31st, 2025.
Second.
Motion by Ray Rower and a second by, I'm going to give it to Geisler, boy, that was close. Is there further discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Guskoviac?
How many positions are open right now?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Guskoviac, many, I'll say.
Many.
We've got several on the Arts Commission, we've got several on the Historical Commission, but on the Board of Adjustment and Appeals specifically, this is the only thing.
Okay, that's what it's asking. Thank you.
Do we run that with four then? Or, how many?
Five.
Oh, five, okay.
So this will be a full slate.
Okay, all right. Yeah, and that's a, what, that, they, I wasn't going to say that. I was going to say they work hard.
And that was a shameless plug for anyone who's interested in serving on a city commission.
Yep, there we go. All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries, and welcome aboard Lisa Jones, and thank you. Open mic public comment, anybody here to address council on open mic? I'm thinking not. And item 10 is an open mic response. Mr. Harold Hedger was here from Silverrod Street at the last meeting and expressed concerns about the impact of property tax increases on fixed income residents. The impact on residents from budget and levy decisions weigh heavily on staff and the city council when setting the annual budget. The 2023 budget and levy were set to responsibly maintain core services and reliable city infrastructure while adjusting to a significant reduction in state aid in the city's general fund. And then he received this whole letter, and I guess I'll read a little bit more of this. There are a number of factors that determine year-to-year changes in property taxes. The decisions of the city council, Anoka County, and the school board about the amount of tax dollars they need to deliver services may be the obvious factor in your property tax bill, but the value of your property, the total value of all the property in the community, changes in state programs and in state laws, all affect the tax system and play a significant role. These factors can make your tax bill go up in some years and down in others. And for taxes payable in 2023, properties in the city experience significant increases in market value following substantial activity in the housing market. By state statute, assessed value is tied to market value, and the average increase in value for a residential property in Coon Rapids was 19%. If the market value of a property increases more or less than the average increase or decrease in the city, the taxes on that property will also change, shifting taxes from one property to another. The state of Minnesota offers a few options for property tax relief. The Minnesota Homestead Credit Refund Form M1P, M1PR allows for a refund based on household income and property taxes paid on your property. The Special Property Tax Refund, PTR, allows for a refund if your net property tax on your homestead increased by more than 12%, and the increase was at least $100. There is no income limit, and the maximum refund is $1,000. For more information, please call or please contact the Minnesota Department of Revenue, 651-296-3781, or their website. And residents are encouraged to contact the city assessor's office with any concerns or questions about the value of their property or the appraisal process. You've got so much good information in that one little thing, I didn't know where to stop.
Mayor, Council, give credit to Ashley Hansen, wrote the letter, did a nice job. And I should mention also that Ashley did a little analysis of Mr. Hedger's specific parcel information and what changed, and that was mailed separately to him. We didn't go through that for the purpose of the public memo tonight, so.
Nice, nice. All right, and then item 11 is an open mic response to Mr. Shane Fields, VFW Post 9625. He appeared before council to provide information related to a proposed legislative change to the way electronic pull tabs operate. Well, just suffice to say that the change did go through, and we'll wait and see the fallout. Okay. We are at other business. What other business do we have to come before council this evening?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson, you pulled them glasses off right away. What's going on?
Yes, sir. I could look you right in the eye. I was just wondering, Mr. Mayor, seeing as we were talking tonight about, you know, solicitors' license and permits, and I was wondering if Captain Steiner could let us know if someone's, people are probably starting to really get out there and hit the neighborhoods, and what is expected of our folks who are showing up on people's doorsteps, who are canvassing, peddling, soliciting, and what should a resident expect as far as what type of information they have with them when they come to the door?
Sure. Mayor and Council, all solicitors are required to carry their permits issued by the city on them while they, while they're doing their business in town. And I think Ms. Lenzmeyer may have additional requirements, but I don't believe, you know, other than, other than the common courtesies that you would expect at your door and the licensing requirement, I'm not aware of any others.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Carlson, they're required to have their license, and we issue them a name badge which they're required to wear, and if you see someone out in the neighborhoods that don't appear to have that, call us and let us know. If we're not, if it's non-business hour timeframe, call 911 and report it, and we'll send someone over to have a look and ask them to prove that they're licensed here. Then we expect our solicitors to be respectful, especially if there's a no soliciting sign, they're not to approach, and if we get any complaints, then what I can do is call the business that they're working for and inform them that their tactics are a little heavy-handed, and we expect them to improve, so we stay on them that way, and our residents are really good about letting us know if they're having any concerns.
So, Ms. Lenzmeyer, it's not okay to say, yep, the guy in the truck has it when they don't have the permit on him?
That does not work, no.
All right. The Councilmember Novak?
Ms. Lenzmeyer, just a quick question. What is the penalty for not having your ID on you?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Novak, I'll give you a gray answer in that it depends, right? So it'll depend on.
Mr. Brody is so proud of that answer.
Have we warned, there are factors to consider, right? Ultimately, we could ask PD to cite them for their conduct, right? But what we would do is contact their business and ask them to rein them in, then we would revoke if we don't get compliance, is what we would do.
So it'd be more of a civil issue as opposed to criminal?
No, soliciting without a license is a misdemeanor, so if you don't even go through the process of coming in here and getting your permit, or your permit, then it's potentially a misdemeanor crime, not whether displaying, whether you don't have it on display or not. I don't know if we've delved into that too much, but I think Ms. Lenzmeyer can sum that up.
I'm pretty sure if they jump through the hoops to get it, they're going to wear it.
Mr. Mayor, that's correct. They know that we will contact their employer and that we will revoke their right to be out in the community.
All right, very good. Thank you.
I'm sorry, one clarification. That's the entire employer's rights, not that one particular solicitor.
We would start with the solicitor if we have multiple issues, right? So we would revoke the first one that we have a complaint about, but if it's in general, then yes.
Okay.
We have, we have options.
Thank you.
All right. We've got one more council meeting before our big Fourth of July celebration, but there are so many things going on, I want to plant some seeds for people. July 2nd, Sunday, is our parade and our all-class reunion Sunday night. And before I go into the other two days, Bingo will be back this year. Bingo will be back. So Sunday, the 2nd, parade, all-class reunion. Monday, the 3rd, is the car show, and then on the 4th, along with Bingo, is the, our amazing fireworks, and they're going to be going off the roof of our brand-new fire station down on Mississippi Boulevard, so it's going to be great. I don't remember if the signups are over for the parade, if people are still interested in being in the parade. I don't remember when the deadline was on that, but it'll be 1:00 in the afternoon on the 2nd. And we'll remind you of all of this again at the next council meeting, but. Other business to come before council tonight. Mr. Hammer?
Mr. Mayor, Council, reminder to residents that summer is here. Our annual irrigation watering restrictions are in effect, odd-even, from June 1 through August 31st, so odd-numbered homes, water on odd days, even on even days enforcement will occur as needed, but hopefully people understand, and water costs money, and it's a good product to consider from a conservation standpoint. So I know it's warm, I know grasses need water, but you don't need to water all day, every day to make that work. Every other day is just fine, and do it in the early morning or late in the evening. Don't water your lawn at 11, 12, 1, 2 o'clock in the afternoon. Doesn't do you any good. It actually makes it worse, so save your lawn, save your money, save the water.
And Mr. Hammer, is it June 19th we'll have the Rachi, the sustainability, the systems, again, the controls, irrigation controls?
Yes, I believe that's correct, Mr. Mayor. They were talking about June 19th, but with city offices being closed, it may get kicked back to the 20th.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
So it's right around that date that it will be up and available, yes, those irrigation sensors.
So that's the first come, first serve, available to people with irrigation system and city water.
Pretty substantial discount, good deal.
Pretty substantial discount, yeah. Okay. Councilmember Guskoviac, did you have something?
I was just going to point out, we've got Summer in the City meetings coming up, right? Starting in June?
Yep. Next week.
Week from tonight.
Week from tonight is our first meeting.
Well, see, that's really important.
Yeah, I was going to bring that up. I thought you were going there.
No, no, my head's already on the carnival. Mr. Stanwell?
Mayor, Council, actually, I was going to mention the Summer in the City meeting, starting at Moore Park next week on the 13th. Council will recall, in the last couple of years, we've tried to enhance those Summer in the City meetings. We've always had a lot of fun. There are city booths there, presentation by the mayor, police, fire trucks, public works vehicles, that sort of thing. We also have some entertainment for the kiddos, ice cream. It's really a nice event, so even if you don't live in the Moore Park area for this next one, certainly could drive in to attend that. And then on June 27th, there will be a meeting at Woodcrest Park, and July 11th, Boulevard Plaza, so we're looking forward to those, and always well attended.
And, Mr. Mayor?
Awesome. Councilmember Geisler?
Yep, and on Thursday this week, we have another summer concert in the park, and that's Ecuador Monta, and then two weeks later on the 22nd, so we'll remind you about that one. And the other summer concert is the Rockin' All Stars, so lots of great things happening in the parks. And then for the kids, Rec on the Spot, and there's Rec on the Spot at different parks throughout the city. There's a, you know, a couple every day, you know, on Monday through Thursdays, so check the city website, and, you know, so starting next Monday, they're going to be at Riverview Park and Thorpe Park. And so bring your kids, and you've got these fun activities for them in the park, and that will happen throughout the summer, so come and join the fun.
Meeting in the park, 6:30, 7?
6:30 to 8, I believe is the posted time. I can double check.
That was definitive, or you're looking?
Yeah. 6:30 to 8.
6:30 to 8, okay, very good.
I just closed that page about a second before you asked a question.
And then, Mr. Mayor, one other, it doesn't start till the 21st, but again, the Coon Rapids Farmers Market is going to start, and that's Wednesdays from 3:00 to 6:00 at the ICE Arena, so that starts on June 21st, so lots of things happening in the community. And check the city website if you can't remember.
All right, very good. Any other business to come before council tonight?
Motion adjourned? Second.
Motion by Carlson, second by Novak to adjourn, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned.